All right, good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, October 30th, 2023. Time is, well, 6:06 PM and we're located in the Select Board Conference Room at Town Hall in Southwick. This meeting is being recorded and if anyone else is making their recording of the meeting, please make it known to the Chair. We'll start off this evening with public comments. If anyone has any public comments that they'd like to address to the Board, for a topic that's not on the agenda, now's your opportunity. We'll start with in-person first. Anyone? Seeing none, we'll go online. Anyone online? Thank you. We're caught up. 6:05 PM poll hearing for Verizon New England and EverSource Energy for 1 and 18 Hudson Drive. I will also note for the record that in attendance tonight is myself Doug Mogul. Jason Sharone Vice Chair is absent. Diane Gale Clerk is in person. Carl Steinhardt is on Zoom. Lisa Anderson is here and Nadine Signoni Assistant CIO is here as well. Moving to the poll hearing, I'll just go with my usual disclaimer because for those that don't know, 18 Hudson Drive is a new facility for Wally Computer Associates of which I am an employee. I don't see how I would have any problem to preside over this ministerial procedure for the location of a poll along Hudson Drive to provide service to that building. But if anyone has an objection, I will be glad to open and and then postpone the hearing to a future meeting when we have a larger attendance of this Board because I don't think we could have a vote of one member.
I would concur with your being able to participate in the sense that town meeting approved this specific project last November and the planning board has also approved all the site plan and special permits that go forward with it.
So if there's any objection, now's your chance.
You need me to stream back in from your drive?
We're going to get to that. Do you mind if I preside over the hearing or?
No.
Okay, well then we're going to get to you in a moment. I just got to read some stuff and we're going to get to the Verizon part of the hearing.
I have no issues.
Good. All right, is there a public hearing notice? Just going to do some plan. No, it's an order for a joint or identical poll location. So here's the long and short of it. Is on Hudson Drive to place one jointly owned midspan poll on the west side of Hudson Drive and approximately 75 feet southerly of the existing poll. T two and a half, E two M and 95 feet northerly of existing poll T two E two, 445 feet northerly of the center line of Feeding Hills Road. Place one jointly owned midspan poll numbered T three and three quarters, E three M two on the west side of Hudson Drive at a point approximately 56 feet southerly of existing poll T four E four, 106 feet northerly of existing poll T three and a half, E three M and 950 feet northerly of the center line of Feeding Hills Road. Reason: EverSource has initiated their request to place two jointly owned midspan polls in order to provide services to customers at both number one and number 18 Hudson Drive and to provide for the distribution of intelligence and telecommunications and transmission of high and low voltage electric current. And it's also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as such said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Petitioners reserve one space for one cross arm a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire and police telephone signal wires belonging to municipality and used exclusively for municipal purposes. I need a, is this actually a hearing? So I need a motion to open the hearing.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion. Doug Mogul, aye?
Diane Gale, aye.
Okay. Now's your chance. Come on up.
Normally I don't know where to sit, but right in between.
That would be perfect.
Well, you listed everything off. I assume you have the map in front of you.
Could you start off by introducing yourself for the record?
Getting ahead of myself. Yeah, Don Bonner with Verizon.
Okay.
I just went out to the site a little while ago in the rain and measured it. Everything looks pretty good. Fairly accurate, maybe a foot off here or there, but that's really not much. And I noticed the building that you spoke of is going in and it's looking pretty big. So I think that's probably why they need these other poles there is to manage the load of the wires that it's coming in so it can support that building and building one before it. It's a pretty standard poll request. I didn't see anything that stood out when I was in the field.
So this said it was to support one, one and 18. Is it actually 10 and 18 Hudson Drive?
No, did I say, well, whatever, it looks like it says building one. I didn't check the address when I was out there.
There's the address. It is one.
One. Okay, just making sure.
Take a photo, but we'll go down.
Existing poll. Oh, I see. Here's one. Here's the other one.
Additional attic public storage is the building. The other building.
We know somebody over there.
So another person probably won't dissent. That's good. I don't, I didn't have anything else to add except the stakes are in place. This set well back off the road midspan for sure. And nothing looked out of unlike what you see in front of you in your 2D drawing.
We can assume that's clear of any driveways.
It's going, the wires will be going over driveways and I think part of this is
The pole is like in the middle of that.
Correct.
That's, I'm sure that's clear of a driveway.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And these poles will keep it, keep the wires higher over those driveways as well. So I think that's probably another good reason to have these poles there. Safety purposes and keeping them at the minimum of 18 feet and hopefully more over the driveways.
Okay. Any other comments from the Board?
No.
Anyone that wants to speak in favor of this application? Either in person or on Zoom?
Favor, huh? Favor.
Name an address for the record, young lady.
Patty Gergen, 23, One Side Circle. Owner of one Hudson Drive. We're expanding. We have all the permits and everything. This is just to add service in for the expansion.
Perfect. Anyone else here or on Zoom? Okay, anybody opposed to this application? Either in person or on Zoom? Seeing none. Entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I'll make that motion to close the hearing.
I will second the motion. Doug Mogul, aye?
Diane Gale, aye.
Okay. Now, is there a motion?
Yeah, you have a, on your fourth page of your package, you have the order for the joint or identical poll location. And that's what you're going to be voting on. You'll be signing it and the town clerk will be certifying it.
Okay. Well, I read three quarters of it, so.
Yeah, no, you just, you just vote to adopt the order as discussed and read during the hearing.
Would someone like to make that in the form of a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt what was read earlier to place those two poles on Hudson Drive.
I'll second the motion. Doug Mogul, aye?
Diane Gale, aye.
Done. And we'll sign that.
So you know what?
We'll sign it tomorrow. Okay. 2410B dated 10/17 and the amount of $411,155.83. We acknowledge payroll warrant number 2409 dated 10/24/2023 and the amount of $287,170.28. I need a motion to accept the open session minutes dated 10/16.
I'll make that motion as amended. I gave her a few name corrections and one correction to the term, just so you know, one of the terms was stated correctly. But she's got the correct revised.
I have faith in your judgment on that. I will second the motion as amended. Doug Mogul, aye?
Diane Gale, aye.
And do we have executive session minutes to come around? Entertain a motion to accept the executive session minutes of 10/16/2023.
I will make that motion to accept those minutes.
Second, Doug Mogul. Doug Mogul, aye?
Diane Gale, aye.
Okay. Are you, you have a timed appointment or are you just on the agenda here?
On the agenda.
No, we're going to get to you next. So we have to regretfully accept the resignation of former Police Chief Mark Prinicky from the Capitol Expenditures Committee. And he writes, "I have served on this committee for 10 years and I feel it is time to step away from this commitment. If any questions, you may contact me at the cell phone number you have on file." Mark Prinicky. We'll make a certificate for Chief Prinicky and we shall endeavor to fill that spot and I'll endeavor to find out how we fill that spot because it's a it's a select board appointee.
Yes, it is.
So we'll post for advertising to fill that vacancy. Okay. When we last met a few meetings ago, the Select Board had given direction to the Chair to attempt to find a candidate for town clerk collector. I said that wrong. Anyway. And we did secure a candidate and is a returning cast member to our Town Hall and Jessica Menzone. So Jessica Menzone, we have an agreement in principle subject to the approval of this Board since it is a department head position and needs to come back in front of the Select Board for a vote. Jessica and Michelle are both here tonight, so we can have any discussion we choose to have if there's any questions or comments, concerns or thoughts on the agreement. We can go from there.
I have no concerns with the agreement. I just read an article today about businesses hiring back former employees and key staff. So you fit right into that. Very good timing. So welcome back.
Thank you.
And I did speak to Michelle about it and she has nothing, right things to say about your ability to step in and pick it right up. So I'm comfortable with that.
I concur with Diane's statements. In this day and age, you want to make sure you can attract people that have the skill sets and the experience and we are fortunate to be able to have another person come back into our organization that has only continued to professionally develop themselves.
Thank you.
Would you like to say anything, Mrs. Menzone?
Thank you. I'm excited to come back to town.
Okay, so what do we need to do, Carl? We need to make a motion, correct?
Yes, you're going to make a motion to approve the agreement and the appointment for this position as the town clerk collector and treasurer through fiscal year 27. Your Board needs to do that because you're three fifths of the appointing authority. And then at your meeting this evening, tonight, the, under the Special Act, which still controls the position, the Chairman of the Finance Committee will also need to sign off individually under his authority as will the Chairperson of the Board of Assessors. All consistent with the original Special Act. And then at some point in the near future, everything is structured so that the Special Act will split the positions and then will continue on to secure the services of a separate full-time professional town clerk.
You want to make that in the form of a motion?
I will make a motion to accept the agreement per the root, the details that Carl just so eloquently listed and to appoint Jessica Menzone for the position.
And I'll second the motion. Roll call vote. Doug Mogul, aye?
Diane Gale, aye.
Now we just need to sign this. We'll sign that. You signed them already. Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, that's going to be, Jessica will determine that tomorrow with Nadine.
The agreement date is today though, right?
Yeah, yeah, today is, it's per the vote and and of course, if the Chairman of the Finance Committee is present for the meeting, it would be very important worthwhile if he was sign off on those documents also.
He just happens to be sitting in the back of the room. Mr. Diddy, would you want to come up here and sign these while we're signing them?
No, I'll do it tomorrow.
Okay. Done. Select Board determined town annual census insert stuffers. Please see attached flyer samples. So we got a thing about code reds.
In addition to code red.
Was this an old one or is this a new one?
That, you mean the color, the color full-size generic code red one?
No, the one that says census flyer in my thing.
No, that's the one I, that's my suggestions for an insert and then there's this one in your folder.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, the only reason why
wasn't in it.
Right, I brought, the other one is under chair mail. So you can look at that in a minute. The only reason why is we had a LEPC meeting last week and it was, it was reinforced that we should be having the general public update their code red information. And we thought, well, this would be a public education campaign by putting this out there to explain to people what it's all about. We certainly would customize that form through the Emergency Management Director who's very much involved in advocating for this system and wanting to have good good database so that we can get a hold of people. But if we can, you know, look at this other document that's being offered, then maybe that could have another way of incorporating both issues that are being sought for consideration this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and Diane has submitted a document for consideration. Michelle, when are these to buy?
Well, they're going out a little earlier because of the situation. So I need to get them to the Frencher by the end of November, the first of December. Basically, the party.
So we will certainly have a meeting well in advance of that. So let's carry this under old business for next week. Okay. Okay, we have an invoice number 27 from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission in the amount of total $2,048.11. Need a motion to approve. It was in your hair. This is the North Lake Avenue project.
I'll make a motion to approve invoice number 27, LEPC.
Doug Mogul, I'll second the motion. Roll call vote. Doug Mogul, aye?
Diane Gale, aye.
Okay. First under new business, note that the fiscal year 25 school budget roundtable scheduled for 12/6. I believe that's usually 5:30 over at Woodland School. Next, Sewer Commission, we have in your folder. Based on our adoption of the sewer rates at our last meeting, there was a couple of policy decisions that the sewer commissioners need to adopt to affect some of the definitions for different ratables. The first was the adoption of a sewer multiple unit residential rate cap. So this would consider that any multiple unit residential property of 10 units or more commonly referred as apartment complexes, the rate shall be capped at the tier two rate per 1,000 gallons regardless of actual usage in excess of 30,000 gallons. For multiple unit residential rental properties, sorry. Multiple unit residential rental properties specifically designated as elderly complexes of 10 or units or more, the elderly rate shall be applied and shall not be subject to a minimum. And this is adopted on March 30th of 2023, which I'm pretty sure that that's not right. Pretty sure it's October 30th.
Oh, yeah.
So I would take a motion to adopt that as of today and I'll change it here.
I'll make a motion to adopt those policies.
I'll second the motion. Doug Mogul, aye?
Diane Gale, aye. And it also just changes the form the elderly rate form to clarify that definition.
I was going to do that next.
All the same.
That's all right. So the elderly rate, it obviously drives the elderly rate application to be 65 or older and there's a couple of other stipulations on here that you're not supported by anyone else living in the home. Property is by permanent full-time residence and then the N is the owner of the home as recorded at the assessors. So I need a motion to approve. Well, let's get two of these. It's the same one.
That's the, that's the current. So it really just defines this down here. It just says they will not have the minimum charge.
Gotcha. So I need a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve the new form, the new elderly rate application form.
You, second, Doug Mogul, aye?
Diane Gale, aye.
Done. 2024 Municipal Cybersecurity Awareness Grant Program. This was in your folder. This is something we did last year. It's a grant that's open to communities and it leads to some online training available to all municipal employees and also if you have a, basically if you have an email with the town, you get signed up for this. The schools also did it last year. Police and Fire did this last year. And now that we're on a consolidated deal, this might be a good opportunity to have all of it together. The schools can choose the education path on their own. But now that police, fire and Town Hall are in one domain, this will be good for all of us to take this. It's my suggestion that everybody take this again and the new lessons that'll be in it. So I believe this require, it didn't require it, but I believe a vote of the Select Board in favor of it would be good for the application itself to apply for said grant. So I'm looking for a motion to from the Select Board to support the submission of a 2024 Municipal Cybersecurity Awareness Grant. And I'll second the motion. Doug Mogul, aye? Think we should probably table this next one because this is Mr. Perone's mission right now. But it is to discuss liquor license decreased use by certain establishments in the town. And we have a chart here of the outstanding liquor licenses that are allocated both for alcoholic, sorry, beer and wine plus cordials, et cetera, and off-premise seasonal, et cetera. There was some concern raised, I believe, by Mr. Perone that there may be some licenses that are outstanding that are not being, being used. And therefore we should, pocket licenses aren't allowed, but we should probably start having a conversation around how those licenses are being used and make sure that we're doing everything correctly under under mass general law and right by the business owners that hold those licenses today. So we'll carry that to next week.
Okay, carry forward.
Okay, EDC proposed mission statement and there was an invitation from to have EDC come to, to have us go to the EDC meeting on November 15th. I think it's a great idea. I see the Chair of EDC is here. However, and I'm not pulling rank, it's just normal protocol is with EDC would attend a Select Board meeting. And I actually have a conflict on the 15th of November. Would it be possible to have EDC attend, we're meeting on the 13th, correct? To come into our meeting on the 13th or the 20th, Thanksgiving week, we're probably not meeting, right?
We are not meeting on the 27th. We are meeting 6, 13 and 20 of November.
So that the 13th or the 20th, Inga, you want to let us know?
I will let you know within 24 hours.
I suppose that's all right. That'd be great. Thank you very much. Holiday gathering, 12/15 at Town Hall. So that's for town employees, boards, commissions. We usually have, that's usually a Friday, correct?
Yes, sir. It's usually, usually do it about what, 4:30 or something in the afternoon on a Friday?
Yep.
So this would be, you can't go too much later than this because the following Friday is the holiday weekend. So and people will be traveling. So we have to stay away from that date.
Okay. And the clerk is usually in charge of all that?
Yeah, whichever, the Board can designate one of its members, they can work.
And being that Jason's not here, I, I second the motion.
Okay, so if I get this clear, it's going to be the Vice Chairman is going to be dealing with this. Okay.
The Vice Chairman shall be in charge of the holiday event this year and he'll have plenty of support and backup from Diane, myself and the Town Hall staff. It always comes off great.
Yeah, it's really, that's no issue anyway. It's the same drill every year, so.
Okay, but that's, that's the date.
So it's hosted by the Select Board? Is that what we're saying?
Generally speaking, it's hosted by, it's at Town Hall. Last year it was in the Senior Center. A couple of years earlier it was in the Auditorium. I don't know where it'll be this year. We'll see. We'll keep it a secret. Last year I think we had horrible weather. I think it kept everybody away, if I recall, rain, snow, something. Yes, no? There was eight of us there.
No, that wasn't last year.
It was.
No, that's it. Yeah, last year was somewhere, I don't remember.
All right, well, nobody came anyway. We got to do a better job of getting the word out.
Well, I would imagine the year before was COVID year, wasn't it? So.
No, anyway, moving along, it's going to be a great event this year though. All right, Carl, any new business?
Let's see. I just want to make sure that now that we've taken the necessary votes to wait for the Special Act to be acted on by the legislature for the town clerk collector position. The community did vote, we voted the funds to look at the floor plans. So I would really like to think at this point in time, while we're waiting for that to happen, we should be looking at having a working group of people about changing what office space will be necessary to actually carry out the split and that's going to involve programming resources and dollars and things of that nature. So you know, the Board can have me work with the facilities and ground supervisor, the clerk of the works, the building inspector. the facilities and ground supervisor, the clerk of the works, the building inspector, uh, as a money person, so that would have to be a designated member of the finance committee and then someone through the assessor's office that has familiarity with their operations as well as, um, Jessica incoming. So we're gonna have to have a group of people sort of sorting this out so we can determine what our options are gonna be and then come forward with a plan, um, as part of our budget program planning. So does anybody have any objections with my putting together a group of people to accomplish that task?
I have none. Diane?
Not at all.
I mean, we, we know what it's about. You just did a major part of, of the issue today. And we, we need to start thinking about all the implications going forward and what that means to our floor plan planning and how things flow in the building and, you know, we're gonna have to consult with people. Because it's an operational issue, it's a building code issue, there's a whole bunch of things that come into the mix. So let's just start having a big brainstorm session about it and see where we go. Sound okay?
Fair enough. Any other new business, Carl?
Uh, no, sir.
Done for me.
Okay, I do have one more thing. So it's also for EDC. So previously we had discussed that we did not need to form a revolving account for EDC. But then there was further discussion around having uh, charges for certain events and whatnot that would require us to take in, uh, monies. And I'd have to read the, the law again, because I did read it the other day in the mail that we had and I thought it said it had to come in with the town, with the fiscal year. It couldn't be done mid-year. I could be wrong, but I swear that's what I read. Um, and I think we're pretty tight for this town meeting anyway, so we should just start. I, I don't have any objection to doing it, but we should get ready for, um, at the annual to have an article when we renew the other revolving funds. Here it is, anyway.
Well, I, I was carrying that below under, um, under the special town meeting review of the items on the draft warrant.
Correct, but this was under chair mail under, uh, under new business and it says the establishment of any fund shall be not made later than the beginning of the fiscal year in which the fund shall begin. Any new revenue source becomes available for the establishment of revolving fund in this session, section, such a fund may be established in accordance with this section upon certification by the city auditor, town accountant or other officer having similar duties that the revenue source was not used in computing the most recent tax levy. So.
So that says if they did generate something, as long as it were approved by the assessors or town accountants, that they could spend it prior to fiscal year vote.
Correct. The city or town shall honor before July first, vote on the limit of the total amount may be expended. So honor before July first, it's after July first, we'll, we'll get this on this, in the May, in the May, which will get us to um, before July first and then we'll be able to establish a revolving, you know, in accordance with national law and we'll be okay in the interim too. As I, as I read this.
And this, this came up just for clarification, because if they were to do a luncheon and charge, you know, even five dollars to the participant to cover lunch.
Or, or if you did a tabletop show and you charged something, I totally get it.
As long as it's signed off on.
Right. Yeah, we had had this discussion on this board a couple of weeks ago about establishing a revolving and then we said, well, if it's just for, it kinda went the other direction, so if it's just taking stuff, you know, whatever, then we said we don't need to do it, but if, if you're gonna be charging, then we should have this. So we're just gonna go ahead and do, we'll get it, we'll schedule this though for the May, because then it would be in accordance with mass, as I read it. Um, but I don't think it's gonna be a hindrance to anything you're gonna do, so.
Yeah, and generally what happens is, uh, that type of initially establishing vote would come right before all of the annual reauthorizations of all the existing ones. That's how we've done it before, I believe.
Yep. Correct. There's an article establishing any new ones and then an article reestablishing or reaffirming the existing.
Sure, I'll even make a point to make sure I'm helping you put that warrant together.
He's making a funny, he ain't gonna be there if that makes.
That's not what I said.
I know, I hear you.
Said I would help you put it together.
Thank you, Carl.
If I say it, I mean it.
Okay, uh, next, uh, any other new business, Carl, Diane?
No.
Okay, let's move to old business. Uh, first is to reject. Uh, we need a motion to officially reject the Southwood Police Department cupola bids from nine-twenty-two. I made a bad joke in the first meeting, I won't make it again. So we just need a formal motion to reject those bids. They were way too high. At some point we'll rebid.
To reject those bids.
Doug Mogul, a second?
Can we just, can we just double check that, um, Nadine? Do you think, were those bids, were they on the twenty-second or were they on the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-second was a Friday, twenty-seventh was a Wednesday.
Yep, then it'd be the twenty-seventh.
What the bids were.
Right, if that's when the bid, so that's what we want to reject, the ones that were done on the twenty-seventh.
So we'll, we'll take a revised motion to reject any and all bids for the SP, Southwood Police Department cupola that were received up to and including September thirtieth.
That's fine.
Make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Doug Mogul, a second the motion. Uh, Doug Mogul and I. Okay.
You got three more minutes to make your.
Yeah, I knew what was gonna happen. Mayor wanted to dispensary, we're gonna skip over it tonight because we've got discussion coming. Select board goals and objectives, we'll table without Jason here, uh, Noble Steed, ditto. Uh, I did talk to review of land license for American Legion. I would like to have that conversation with the full board. Um, I did talk to Darcy at five o'clock and told her she didn't need to be here tonight. That we were gonna discuss it, but there was, I didn't need any, I don't think we needed any further input at this time from her, so her, if she didn't wanna come, she didn't have to. Mass general law. Okay, town administrator recruitment panel, set names and appoint and job description review, interview search firms scheduled for eleven-six. We're scheduled for eleven-six for the two firms.
Yep, next Monday.
Next Monday. Fantastic. Back to lunch. Okay, uh, Jason's in charge of the T-Mobile hometown grants application, I believe.
Yes, sir.
Is there any update on protocols tonight?
Uh, yes. Uh, number seven. Or, number seven, number seven or page seven. Let me tell you what pages on, hold on. Um, page six, number seven is a choi-, uh, is a choice, the first one or the alternate number seven, I guess we need Jason. This is this or this is an alternate, whichever one y'all like better.
Yeah, I don't think we should, we should not protocol without three select board members here.
Yeah.
Carrie? Let's go, let's, I see the moderator here. Let's skip the next one and go to Southwood Town Meeting Review Items on Draft. Uh, twelve-five, special town meeting warrant according to town clerk, moderator and schools. Discussion establishing revolving account for EDC, we discovered that and we took care of that. Carry that under old business. Uh, I have the draft warrant in front of me, do you? I'd like to make us, uh, first I wanna recognize the moderator, if she has anything she'd like to add for the special town meeting, uh, coming up on December fifth.
I do have two things I just wanna bring up.
Uh, name and address for the record.
My name, my name is, um, Celeste H. Chalk, I live at twenty-two Tierron in Southwood, Massachusetts, um. Do we have a time we're gonna start? Have you set a time?
Six o'clock. We put six on the draft because.
Perfect, six is perfect. Um, I'm gonna need some volunteers to be hand counters. So if anyone is out there listening and interested, please send me an email. My email address is on the town website or just call the town clerk or the select board office secretary and leave a message for me. Um. The only other thing is, I think it's gonna be really important, I found our annual town meeting when we had over three hundred people that if you just simply wave your hand, it's hard to see. So if you, unless you have special needs, please come to the microphone and if you do have some special needs or any other concerns about not being able to participate when you're there in the meeting, we still have, we can't, you have to be there by mass state law. That's not negotiable, but if you need some help or some assistance, like you're in a wheelchair, just reach out, send me an email or call the town clerk's office and we'll make sure we can, I don't want anyone to not be able to get into the auditorium, navigate the auditorium and feel left out. So please reach out if you have anything. That's all I have.
Excellent.
Do you have an extra draft warrant or no?
I'll give you mine in a couple of minutes.
I'll get one email.
Okay.
Obviously, you, you need to remember the, uh, the planning board is going through a process with the town attorney to further refine their draft related articles, but the, the ones that relate to the, uh, the zone change, uh, by the tee house, that's straightforward language. Your retail sales one for the, uh, imposition of the three percent uh, sales, that comes right out of the D O R bulletin as, uh, model language, um, the two votes you have for the community preservation for the pickleball is straightforward and then the general salary transfer, uh, for just the conservation coordinator, that's a housekeeping one from the select board and the conservation. So really the key ones we're waiting for, the ones that relate to the two planning board articles and they're working through that finalization of the language amongst themselves and with the town attorney. So that's what's gonna end up, uh, being what we have here before us for these proposed, um, six articles.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you.
Yes.
My suggestion at this point, and as the, the town meeting warrant is the selectman's warrant, select board warrant, I would suggest to move article three to be the first article. Therefore, if article three were to fail, the town could immediately move to table article one. This has been set forth by the proponents, primarily Jason, um, but, and town meeting as a revenue generator for the town, therefore if the tax mechanism were to fail, it would be potentially counterproductive to, uh, set forth and pass what is currently article one. So that's just my suggestion and the rest of them I really don't, doesn't matter as much to me. But I would rather see the tax article to adopt sixty-four N sub subsection three for the retail tax ahead of the vote to change zoning.
All right, and then.
Probably a little bit of a formality, but I just think it's the prudent thing to do, given the, the way that this has been approached from all angles.
Okay, and then article one would become article two, is that correct?
I don't, I, I don't have any particular order for any of the rest, um, you know. Fourth, fifth or sixth is, and the article six being sixth is fine. I think just swapping, moving three up and everything else down would work.
That's exactly what I'm saying here. Three would become one and then one and two would become two and three. Diane, you good with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Carl, you got any old business?
No, sir.
There's good. I have a few things. Uh, first, uh, I'm happy to report for the sake of a lot of people's Thursday nights, that the master plan advisory committee voted to disband itself. Uh, actually asked the planning board to let us be disbanded. Um, now it's up to the planning board to hold a public hearing, or they are, they're not mandated to, but they are going to hold a public hearing on the master plan. As written, the current master plan suggests that a master plan implemented, implementation committee be formed consisting of a planning board member, a select board member and three members of the public. And during the meeting, and I believe it was adopted, the original suggestion was three residents, but, um, uh, suggestion by, uh, an impact member was to suggest that a business owner uh, have eligibility to be on the master plan implementation committee, even if they're not a resident of the town of Southlake, very similar to what we have with EDC. The master plan implementation committee would be an ad hoc advisory board to the select board with a term of three years. Um, and the, but the first set would be staggered, so the first, um, the first three appointments of the public would be a three or two and a one and then three years thereafter, so you establish that stagger. Um, that's your report back from the master plan implementation, or master plan, uh, advisory committee. Former master plan advisory committee. Um, next, uh, I wanna thank the civic fund, um, and everyone um, that put on an incredible, uh, fantastic farm parade this past weekend. Very broadly attended, streets were packed, great floats, EDC had a great flow, um, or, uh, the agcom had a great float, um, there was just great participation by a lot of people. Joe, thank you for making those trains run on time. I know that's a ton of work to pull that all together.
I would have had ducks and chickens, but the wheel broke on my wagon. Literally. Well, yeah, I, um.
But it was, it was, uh, you know, very well attended and, um, I don't know.
I enjoyed watching the parade.
I, I wanna know how you arranged that weather, because
Yeah.
This, the temperatures went down like it saw a state trooper the next day. It's forty degrees out on Sunday. Yeah, no kidding, but, uh, great job. And then, uh, thanks to the Girl Scouts and everyone who worked to put on the, uh, the trunk or treat. Um, there was, uh, what did you say? Well over five hundred ice cream scoops, but there was eight hundred tickets turned in in total for votes to the contest. That was, it was a ton of people there. It was very, very well attended and everyone had a great time, so thank you to those guys. And of course, thanks to the police department, fire department, um, for helping with the parade and also to the police department, fire department, library, agcom, uh, select member Perron and Mrs. Perron. Um, they had their own little thing at the trunk or treat, so it was, uh, it was great to see some town boards and committees and, um, and also the police and fire.
Without police and fire cooperation, none of these things would be happening.
Absolutely.
They, they truly are the backbone. They, they make it work with their schedules, their budgets, they really are a lifesaver.
Yep. And, you know, I don't think it was a huge disruption to the town. I mean, we closed the main drag through the town for an hour, but I didn't hear any complaints. I couldn't hear, I was in the middle of the parade, but anyway, um, and it, it just comes off smooth and it, you know, it, it takes a lot of planning to make it look that effortless. It's, thank you. Um, that's all I really had. Um, I don't think we have a need to go into executive session tonight.
That is correct. There was, there's nothing that's materialized in the interim that would necessitate that.
So being how we just finished in under an hour, I guess this is obviously the reason Jason makes us go four hours at a time, so. What the heck? Um, I'll, see, you know, I blew past, I was aiming for six forty-five. So, no, I'm gonna go, I'll, I'll take one more shot at public comment if anybody has any and then we'll close up for the evening. Sir?
Uh, the bids that came in too high for the cupola, are they public? Can people see them?
Absolutely.
Yes.
A copy of the details to me?
Absolutely. Perfect.
Well, the project is in the process of being rebid.
Understood, I'd sooner like to see what that.
No, no, that's fine. I just, I'm just letting you know, we are, we did look at, uh, the way the numbers came in and, um, so there were changes, uh, by the facilities manager and the clerk to try to make it more understandable and to educate different tradesmen that were contacting them. So those bids are due to be opened up in the next, what, week or two, Nadine?
Fifteenth?
Okay, that's a, that's a Wednesday.
Yep. There you go.
And the last thing is, the, the board seems to be taking a few steps back. I've noticed, um, tonight. When you make motions for things, a year ago, we would never be able to do it that way. We'd have to spell everything out because people sitting on this side were torturers. It just seemed like some of the motion slider just kind of breezes through. It just seemed like some of the motions that I just kind of breeze through, the B D P C, but we should be more spelt out what we're spending the money on. People kind of know, but they really don't know, like we were told years ago. So maybe we can just go back to a few more words. Wouldn't hurt. Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom? Last call. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second the motion. Roll call vote. Doug Mogul, I. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.